Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen session of the Yukon City Council to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Pastor Ron Rasmussen of Christ Church and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Let's pray. Father, we stand in your presence and recognize, even with our collective knowledge, degrees, smarts, whatever we want to call them, we are so, so far beneath you, Lord, and your, your amazing intelligence, your intellect, your IQ, and your all-knowing. And so, we need to borrow a little bit of that always, Lord. So, we're just asking for that tonight, that we would come in our humility and ask you to be present and to just influence minds and thoughts and expressions and communication as we share together, in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Here.
McCarran?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Smystrela?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Want to start the meeting off with the proclamation, Donnie Robinson with the City of Yukon and Ashley McClung for Main Street, if you guys would come forward. Alright, so, we're here to read the proclamation tonight, says, "Whereas Small Business Saturday was created in two thousand and ten to celebrate over twenty-three million small businesses in America that account for fifty-four percent of all U.S... Hold on now. Fifty-four percent of all U.S. retail sales, and whereas locally-owned businesses play an important role in preserving downtown neighborhoods and promoting community events, and whereas independently-owned small businesses boost the local economy by creating jobs, improving the quality of life for the area residents, and supporting community fundraising activities. Now, therefore, I, John Alberts, Mayor of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November the twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, a Small Business Saturday, and urge our community and residents to visit and to support Yukon's local merchants today and throughout the year, given under my hand and seal this fifteenth day of November, two thousand and sixteen." So, I want to congratulate you all, and if you'll explain a little bit about Small Business Saturday.
Small Business Saturday is, it's an initiative that was started by American Express, and it's a nationwide campaign to encourage people to shop local, you know, of course, throughout the year, but on this certain day in particular, right after last Friday, we want to focus on shopping small, eating small, per se, where we can be local and, you know, shop local and keep our tax dollars in our own cities.
It's a cooperative effort between our local businesses and the city in its entirety and the city staff here. While this is a new project for me, I'm learning every day, going to seminars. However, I'm not a stranger to Canadian County. I was raised here all my life, except three years at Oakdale, I'll be taking shoes. And, but, we have a very good group here, and we're on a revitalization move. And this Small Shop Saturday is going to be a great event, and I encourage everybody to come out and visit. Thank you.
Just on behalf of the city, I'd also encourage the support. It's so important that sixty-six, and not just sixty-six, I don't want to forget about the whole town, but that we support our community, and the tax dollars do stay here in Yukon, and not only on this day, but it's mindful, when you shop here in Yukon, the tax that you pay comes back home to help support just the different projects that we have going on. So, it's important on this day, but our small businesses are so vital to the community. So, thank you all very much. We appreciate your effort. Thank you. That's an opportunity for people to address the council about a non-agenda item. If someone is here tonight that would like to address the council about a non-agenda item, if they'd come forward to the podium, announce their name, their address, and their business. Is anyone here this evening that would like to talk to the council? Okay, then, I'm going to take an opportunity to visit a little bit. Since we have an executive session, the room has a tendency to clean, clear out before we get back a lot of times. I just wanted to go, there's a lot going on, especially on Thursday, November the seventeenth, Sounds of the Season. That's an excellent opportunity to get together for some good community celebration. Oh, go on sale, I'm sorry, not November the seventh, November the seventeenth is when they go on sale. And then the Sound, All Sounds of the Seasons tickets go on sale, YNB, the city will have those for sale. On Saturday, November the nineteenth, the Ladies Club, Christmas Silent Auction, Chill Your Cheeks, the five K at the Large Pavilion, and then the Jingle Walk, Crisp Kringle Carnival there at the Community Center. So, November the nineteenth is a big night if you'd like to participate. And then Sounds of the Season is, there it is, on December the fifteenth. So, those are a couple of things. I'll go through more of those in detail, but I wanted to announce those couple of things to look forward to that are coming up in November, and then the Sounds of the Season later on in December. So, no other business, no other, I'm sorry, we'll close it down, won't we, Jeanne? Alright. At this time, we're going to recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item is one A, and that's the YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda, so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of November the first, two thousand and sixteen. Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
The next item is two A, and that's consider and approve resolution number YMA two thousand and sixteen dash oh six, a resolution of the Yukon Municipal Authority directing the city manager to make an application to the City of Oklahoma City requesting annexation to the limits of Oklahoma City, the south six hundred feet of that certain property located in the north half of section twenty-four township twelve range, excuse me, twelve north range six west of the Indian Meridian near I forty and Frisco Road upon de-annexation from the limits of the City of Yukon and to make whatever action is necessary to accomplish the same. Do I have a motion, please? Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Yonda?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
The next item is three A, and that's consider approving the statement of consent to annexation for attractive land being in the part of the north half of section twenty-four township twelve north range six west of the Indian Meridian near I forty and Frisco Road, Canadian County, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please? Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Smystrela?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
The next item is four A, and that's consider approving a purchase and sale agreement between the Yukon Municipal Authority and Butte Land Investments LLC for property consisting of approximately fifty-seven point seven-one acres of attractive land being in the, a part of the north half of section twenty-four township twelve north range six west of the Indian Meridian near Interstate forty and Frisco Road, Canadian County, Oklahoma, for the purchase price of one million three hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll. Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as YMA, and we'll reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item on the docket is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda, so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of November the first, two thousand and sixteen; B, payment of material claims in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents; C, the designation of items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D, an agreement for services between the City of Yukon and Project Graduation for the term of July one, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, for the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars upon proper application; and E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for December the sixth, two thousand and sixteen, seven P.M. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please? Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll. McCarran?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Next item is item two, and that's the report of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we had a little study session this evening in which you asked for a report on where we stand on our budget for this fiscal year. So far, in this fiscal year, we should, we're in excellent shape. We discussed the various accounts that we had, and we will put the amount of money that we showed you on our spreadsheet on all of the various accounts online, so people could just look at this and study it. But we are rebuilding our money in our pest accounts, our public employee safety, we're rebuilding the reserves, and we are presently online to stay within our budget for this fiscal year.
Any questions from the council? Questions from the council? Mr. Crosby, could you give us just a little taste of where are we as far as our tax collection? Are we on, on target there, lagging just a little bit behind?
On sales tax, we're down about five and a half percent. On use tax, we're up. In fact, we're up enough almost on use tax to make up for the amount that we lost on sales tax. But overall, we're lagging a little down on our total income, but that is where it should be, because none of our money comes in every month on eight and a half percent each month. So, right now, we feel we're right on target to not only meet our budget, but to have a nice carryover at the end of the year.
As far as our accounts, are all of our accounts in good standing?
All of our accounts are in good standing, and like I say, through the problems we've had, we've never missed a payment, and we've taken care of all indebtedness of the city, and we've not held back any checks or done anything like that. We're right on our mark, and are moving forward, and are in sound financial shape.
Pest accounts have been, not replenished completely, but we've made some significant progress. Would you share with the audience the examples?
Pest accounts have changed considerably at the end of the, or beginning of this fiscal year. In each of the three accounts, we had three thousand and twelve dollars, twelve cents, three thousand dollars and twelve cents. At, right now, on the police account, we have five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and five hundred and twenty. In the fire account, we have four hundred and eighty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. And in the general employees' account, we've gone from three thousand and dollars and twelve cents to five hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. Our general fund reserves right now are up about five hundred thousand dollars, and we're at one million six hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Okay, so, our rainy day account has, in case we do have any issue or problem, we have money?
Right, and we also have some certificates of deposits and investments that we can call on on top of that.
Okay, and as, I know that you had mentioned in the study session that you had an opportunity to visit with some other area, some other communities, I guess, in the area, and tax-wise, we're down five and a half percent, but with the group of people, did you say it was ten people? We were at the top?
There were ten cities, it was called the Mid-City Coalition. Everybody was down anywhere from ten to twenty-seven percent of those nine cities. We were in the best shape of any of the cities that were present at the meeting.
So, the fact that taxes down a little bit, that's just what's going on in Oklahoma right now with the economy?
It's gone down everywhere. If your people look, Oklahoma City's down, and they've got a freeze on and problems there, but all cities are going through this presently, but we're going to weather the storm, and we're coming out in great, great shape.
Okay. Questions from the council? Questions? Alright, next item is item three. Mr. Crosby, thank you, sir. Next item is three, and that's consider approving the bid from Samaritan EMS to provide ambulance service to the City of Yukon at an annual cost of one hundred and ninety-two thousand as recommended by the fire chief. Do I have a motion, please? Shall move.
Second.
Council discussion? Council discussion?
I believe we have a gentleman who wanted to speak to that, the safety mayor?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, City Manager. Good to see you again. I wanted a few minutes first to thank you.
Sir, could you give your name for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm Stephen Williamson, President of IMSA, your present provider, and we want to thank you for allowing us to serve your community as long as you have allowed us to do so. We've cared for thousands of your citizens over this timeframe. We've leased space here for the last ten years in the community. We've worked well with your public safety operation. Some years ago, the council found it beneficial for Yukon to join the authority, which is made up of Tulsa and Oklahoma City and fourteen other communities surrounding those two metropolitan areas, to offer world-class EMS service at a price that the smaller communities could afford, using our economies of scale to allow us to, to serve your area. During that time, we have maintained our dispatch accreditation center of excellence, a National Academy of Emergency Dispatch. We've also have been one of, less than one half of one, one and a half percent of the nation's gold standard of accreditation of ambulance services. We are one of a hundred and eighty-seven services out of twelve thousand that are accredited. We've done all this with five hundred employees and fifty-two ambulances in this area. We are operating under a contract of performance-based. It's not a level of service where we say we'll provide three ambulances or two ambulances. We provide whatever is necessary to meet the response times. Now, I really can't say why this came up. We've understood some of it might be the response time changes. We've done all this, that I've mentioned to you before, for this year, it's two hundred thousand dollars is the subsidy that we've asked. It's based on population for all of, all the cities we serve, and it's equal. They receive the same wonderful care of our everyday heroes, our paramedics and EMTs, and have access to the fifty-two ambulances, as I mentioned, for the Western Division, and the fifty ambulances that we have in Tulsa if a natural disaster would take place. Our evidence-based medicine, we've heard a lot about healthcare, really a lot, the last six weeks with the national elections, but one of the things that's taking place is with evidence-based medicine, we're trying to get the same outcomes for less money. And it's been proven over the years that we oversold the quick response time standard that we had before, and evidence has proven that a longer response time benefits the patients just as well without outcome changes. I'm happy to say that next month, we are the cover story of Journal of Emergency Medical Services, along with some other evidence-based publications that have been out showing the nation and communities of the United States that that response time needs to change to what we are experiencing here, with little longer response time, but the same outcomes. As I mentioned to you before, we've done all this for two hundred thousand dollars a I'm asking a couple of questions. Does it concern anybody that when you look at all the bids, that the hundred and ninety-two thousand is so much under what the other two people that have bid dedicated units for your community is? In my thirty-eight years in this industry, and as past president of American Ambulance Association, along with my other duties, there is no way in the world that this will fulfill your RFP at a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars a year. The next question is, if worth eight thousand dollars difference between what you have now and to take the risk of going to, to this type of contract? If it is, once again, thank you for the time we've serviced this, been a service to this community. If it's no, that maybe we need to relook this RFP over. It's just, right now, in our industry nationally, depending on where you live because of wages and so forth, it's four hundred to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a paramedic unit, twenty-four seven. In this community, we experience about twenty-eight percent of the time, we have more than one call at once. Excuse me. So, it's going to take a considerable amount of resources over and above the two to three units to maintain constant coverage here, dedicated to this community as you have specified in the RFP. So, once again, if the risk isn't too great for you, we really appreciate this opportunity. I speak for all the cities that are in the trust, thank you, and if not, we'll continue to work with you on continuation. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, do you mind addressing the council? You've heard the comments, that there's a couple, one, there's some concern about the bid, that Samaritan's bid is too low, and that there's no way that they can provide the service for the amount of money that they've bid, and then the question is whether, you know, I guess the service would be adequate. Do you have a response? Do you mind sharing with us?
Well, I do believe that is a, that is a low bid, but I'm confident that Samaritan wants the business. They, they mirror our, our customer service platform, the way we do customer service here. Also, after speaking with the people at Tinker, they're able to provide the service at Tinker with glowing, glowing returns from those people there, and had no reason to hold back or, or lie to me about their service.
Okay. Any, does the council have any questions?
Go ahead.
Do you, so you feel comfortable with Samaritan, then?
I absolutely do, yes.
Mr. McCarran?
Yeah, is there anyone here from Samaritan this evening?
Yes, they are. I believe they're in that.
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear Samaritan speak as well.
Okay, let's, Chief, listen, hold on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I don't want to let you off the hot seat yet. Any, any other questions for the chief?
I'm sorry.
Ladies?
How many communities do they serve?
Right now, they serve Tinker and Stroud, and I believe they, they serve a county, and I'm sorry, I don't recall which county they serve. You can ask that to Mr. Lykins.
Okay.
Any other question?
I would address one thing on response times. It really isn't so much response times. In a large city, it's different, because they have forty, fifty engine companies that can respond throughout their city. We have two engine companies that can respond here. So, if our engine company's tied up on a medical aid call, and we're tied up for twenty, thirty, forty minutes, then that means that whole, whole group is out of service at that time. So, it's, it's really, it's a matter of response time, just kind of apples and oranges. It's mainly about scene time for our personnel, and also getting our customers transported to the hospital quickly. And even though I understand the research, I understand outcomes and all that, but it's also a way a person are treated, and what they feel about how they're, how they're transported, and their, their quick time to the hospital. So, I think that matters to our citizens here.
Okay.
How are y'all this evening?
Fine, sir. What's your name, sir?
Jason Lykins. And I apologize, I'm a little nervous, so.
We're nervous, too. You're fine. So, you've heard a little bit about, I guess, let's start, start with, well, Mr. McCarran, you're the one that wanted to talk to the gentleman. Do you have a question in mind?
Well, I just, I was going to ask him specifically if he had some comments in regard to the response time in their current, I believe they're, they've assigned, what, two units to Yukon that you plan to man and keep here and everything else, and, and that, of course, you're competing against the people from IMSA as well, and so, I think I'd like for you to comment that on the service and how you serve the communities that you're in right now, which is obviously not very many, and you're, you're just, is it more of a fledgling company that you're starting out, or just?
We are young.
Catched?
We are young, yes.
Okay.
We started in two thousand and twelve. Stroud, we've been there since that time. That was our first contract, our first good one that we got. Talked to the city manager there about three weeks ago, they're very happy with the service. The average response time in town is about eight minutes and forty-nine seconds, and then outside of our, kind of the, the city limits, it's about twelve minutes. There's a pretty super rural area there that we cover. Tinker Air Force Base, our average response time is just under five minutes. We were told historically, when we took over that contract, which we went through a competitive process, that their average response time was about thirty minutes. And so, we turned that around to be less than five minutes. We operate two ambulances on the Air Force Base, twenty-four seven. As far as here, you know, geographically, Yukon's not very large, and, you know, Steve spoke to some, some statistics, and it appears to me that about forty or fifty percent of the patients that are picked up here get transported to Canadian Valley. Well, when the ambulance isn't responding from Twenty-third and Walker, there's a pretty good likelihood that you're going to have a much better response time. And if the ambulance, most of the time, is transporting to Canadian Valley, then that really just makes that easier. Now, I, I have no doubt, we will, from time to time, probably have to call upon IMSA for mutual aid. You know, IMSA calls upon for mutual aid also. They use El Reno currently. So, you know, I'm not saying that, that we're going to be...
Well, do you guys, do you guys have a mutual agreement between the two of you?
Yeah, well, yes, sir. Yeah, actually, they, they...
Between IMSA and, do you have a mutual agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And also with El Reno, is that correct, all three of you, or is...
Correct.
Okay, so, that would apply to any ambulance service that's in the immediate vicinity, is that correct?
Correct. And so, what, what that really means is that, put that in, in context, is if there's not two ambulances available in the City of Yukon, and IMSA calls and requests mutual aid, we won't be able to respond to it. So, there, there's always going to be one ambulance in the City of Yukon, unless we have something that exceeds two ambulances in any given time period, which could happen. I mean, there has been, I worked as a paramedic in Yukon with IMSA, and there's times when there's three or four calls that drop. It does happen. It doesn't happen very frequently. As far as the customer service aspect, there's, there's a reason why I stood at the back of this room, and the reason for that is, is out of respect. These seats are for the citizens, and I think that EMS, and that, not, not IMSA, EMS in general, has really lost touch with the heart and soul of what we really do, which is take care of people. It's not always about a response time. Sometimes, you know, outcome is fine, but if you have a panicked family, and everybody's losing their mind because grandpa's having a heart attack, they want somebody there to intervene quickly. And sometimes that is the fire department, most of the time it is. But when the fire department's there for thirty or thirty-five minutes waiting for an ambulance to arrive, what does that speak to your fire department, when they're, they can't really do much more than what they're doing? So, from my position, and I'll pull it up, again, I apologize, I'm not a public speaker, we are certain that we will serve your community, we are certain we will serve it well, and I stand behind what we stated in our RFP.
Other questions? Ladies? I have a question. Mr. Williamson brought up the idea that you're eight thousand dollars cheaper than they are, and the chief acknowledged that, yes, your contract is cheap, so my concern is, is that contract going to be just as cheap next year? You like the phone book guy? Next year, it goes up ever?
Yeah, it's the AT&T plan. No, 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 not at all. We have, we, we operate one ambulance twenty-four seven out of, out of Stroud, and we've done so since two thousand and twelve for a subsidy of sixteen thousand dollars. They run one point nine calls per day. We estimate the call volume out of Yukon, based on IMSA's data, at seven point eight to about nine, so about three to four times, four point four times the call volume. So, we believe that the, essentially, the billing principle, and when you look at the payer mix in Yukon, the payer mix in Yukon is much, much better, by as much as ten or eleven percent in private insurance packages, to the positive, and some of the lower-paying Medicare or Medicaid are about seven percent. Medicare and Medicaid are about seven percent lower than what you would see on a, on a statewide average, and certainly lower than what you'd see in certain parts of Oklahoma City. So the private payer is much better looking, and we think that we've worked with our, our billing company, who is, who, who is, um, outsourced on developing our financial model. We feel like it'll work.
So we're not gonna expect a big jump next year?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is item number four, and that's consider authorizing the city engineer to advertise and receive bids for the two thousand and seventeen snow and ice plowing, plowing and removal services. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Next item is five, and that's consider a motion to recess as the Yukon City Council and to reconvene into executive session for confidential communication with Tony Puckett of McAvoy and Taff concerning pending litigation as provided by Title twenty-five, O S two thousand and three, section three oh seven B four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Time we'd, we'd recess, I'd like to invite Tony Puckett, Jim Crosby, Tammy Spain. Does Matt come?
Who?
Matt?
If you'd like to go.
Okay.
Matt Wheatley.
Luke Shivers.
Next item is item six. Consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
I'd like to read the, uh, minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, and no action was taken, and no votes were cast. Next item is item seven, that's new business. Any new business this evening?
None denied, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council discussion?
Councilwoman Yanda?
Um, well, I've just, uh, we're happy to have Darrell Andrews class here this evening and, and attendance, and, um, I know you're looking forward to your mock trial, and, and then I want to encourage all the citizens of Yukon to shop local, shop in Yukon for the holiday season. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smystrela?
Oh, I also want to congratulate, before you do your mock council, but it's, it's gonna be exciting, and I'm happy that all of you involved in it. You have a wonderful leader over there, so we appreciate your coming tonight. That's all I have.
Councilman McCarron?
Yeah, I'd also like to, I always get a big kick out of it, I usually stick around at least for the first part, and always try to figure out, see who's gonna play me, so it's always a lot of fun to do that. Uh, once again, I want to thank all the parents and everything for coming for your children. I think it's probably one of the most important things, because hopefully, one of these days, all of them will be sitting up here and taking our places. Uh, the, uh, Small Business Award Saturday was a, was a presentation proclamation, I think, is pretty, pretty important, uh, in, at Ashton McClung and Dominic, and they came. Uh, every week, we have a community coffee where we have seventy to a hundred people that show up, and mostly, there are a few of our large businesses, but most are small businesses in our community, and it shows you what a wonderful, small community that we do have. So I think it's very important that we support that, and I appreciated them both coming tonight and, and, uh, the mayor, uh, putting out a proclamation for them. And once again, uh, Mr. Andrews, thank you for bringing your, your Buffalo Hurry in, and, and, uh, I look forward to seeing them.
Councilman Russell?
Uh, please, everybody, on this Small Business Saturday, show up and support the community. That's what we need to do, and it'll help everyone out in their own city. And, uh, guys with the mock city council, have fun with it. Who knows, one of you all might be up here one time. Have fun.
First of all, we'd like to, uh, extend our condolences. Uh, Kinley, who, uh, worked with the chamber, she passed, um, would extend our condolences on behalf of the city and the council to who and her, her and her family. Next, I want to echo the idea about the small business. I'm a small business myself, there's other, there's two other people that are up here are small business people, and it is a vital part of the community, America, et cetera, and a lot of you all someday will probably have a small business. You're a pig farmer and a kettle, cattle farmer right now, say rancher, right? So, anyway, it's important, and it's, it's vital to America, it's important to the community, and it's important that we support those people, so it, it's a great cause. Um, I do also want to say thank you to Mr. Andrews for continuing to be, uh, faithful in your dedication to your community, to the council, to the kids, uh, kudos to what you've done for many, many years. So I've been coming here, I guess, for about fifteen years, and you have too, Darrell, and I appreciate that, and all of you all are very lucky, lucky to have an excellent example of a great community servant in Mr. Andrews. He's, uh, given untold hours through city council, the different, I mean, um, I'm sorry, um, student council, uh, been the state secretary three, four, or five times, uh, helped you all with the leadership course and everything, and it is true that even the, the things that you'll take forward out of that class, just in leadership, not necessarily even on the council, but just maybe in church or amongst your friends, because remember one thing, you're an example to someone. I mean, it may be a good example or a bad example. If you have a sibling, your sibling's watching you, your friends are watching you, your coworkers when you go off into work, you know, the presidential race, the whole country's watching you and how you act. So it's important, and what you're learning, it's a great foundation. Thank you, Mr. Andrews, for what you've given to our community, and your progeny is great. Thank you very much. Um, I want to, I bumbled through the first part of it, but the one thing that's dear, near and dear to my heart is the chill your cheeks. That's an opportunity to get out and exercise.